...site ever would be. Based on the evidence presented today, we respectfully request that the city council approve this rezoning to Plan Development Village. We're available if you have any questions and of course, reserve the ability to rebut comments that are made. City councils at the Planning Commission, as questions were asked, we came up and responded to them as they were asked, which made sure we didn't miss anything. Sometimes if you wait to the end, we miss. We will handle that whichever way the council prefers. We can ask questions and then may just, we didn't rebut, but we may answer questions and then just saved final comments for rebuttal. So however you prefer to proceed.
Would that be fine? Okay. Questions for the applicant before we, yes?
Jerry, a couple of quick questions, please. You've mentioned a couple of different times that Mr. Flore is trying to be a good neighbor and that he would like to work with the city as much as possible to try to make this agreeable to most. I know it will not be agreeable to all, no matter what happens here. Would the applicant consider, on the north side of the property adjacent to the parallel dock, would they consider putting single-story villas in instead of those three buildings?
And we were asked that question prior. We knew that that had been a question and those are the three most valuable buildings in the project. They are the only buildings that are against water. They look across the water to other condominiums. So we believe that the condominium buildings there are consistent and compatible with the condominiums across the way and that would not be a request that we would be willing, would be able to grant.
Okay. And if this does not get approved, what's Plan B?
We're moving forward with the hope that this will be approved. If it is not approved, we, there has been no formal site plan done. There's a cost to that, we don't know. It would have single-family zoning, so it would be some sort of single-family product, probably not the types, the type of product that you see in Ponte Gorda Isles, but a different product because you allow a variety, as I explained, a variety of uses in single-family. But I, we haven't had that discussion, so I wouldn't want to put anything out there at this time.
Okay. And what kind of timing is involved in getting this project started?
We believe it would be about 18 months till you saw actually earth turning out there and it'll take some time to get, you know, things built. Once construction is started and you have a product to actually sell, we would hope to see build out within about 10 years. That's probably a little optimistic, but somewhere in that range.
Thank you.
I had a question about the dry docking facility. I don't know where that came from, but generally, isn't that like a large steel building?
That's what people think. If you've been to other communities that have them, they can now be designed with facades that will mimic the facades of the building. You could certainly place those conditions if that would be your preference over the single-family, over the parallel docks.
Okay. And then as far as, we were saying that this locks in the concept plan, even though it's not one of the exhibits, how is that locked in if it were approved?
In fact, that's what I was going to ask you to defer to me. Jerry, I agree with your analysis of the distinction between a rezoning and a planned village development, that it's, the concept plan is key. Based on discussions during the course of this hearing, it was brought to my attention that we don't actually have a concept plan made part of this ordinance and I would like to make that an exhibit. I would also like to have language that would be in paragraph roman numeral three that I'll discuss at the appropriate time in reference to that concept plan. Do you have a concept plan? Some of the original, initial exhibits that were as part of your PowerPoint would be useful, but I don't know if that's as detailed as need to be.
The concept plan is the site plan that was submitted with the application and that, so when I submitted the application to, into the, into the record, I was submitting that concept plan as well.
Do you have that available? Because I want to make sure that that's going to be adequate. I would make that Exhibit E to this proposed ordinance.
I believe it's at the very end. I believe it's page 60 of the application. Yep.
There's your concept plan right there. That shows the layout of the buildings. It shows what's going to be preserved. It shows the open space area. It details the density. All of those things that we've discussed are all set forth on that concept plan, which was submitted with the application. If you want to be abundantly clear on that, we would absolutely accept a condition that we must develop in substantial conformance with the concept plan.
And that's what I'm going to do. A1, I, for example, I was looking at your recreational amenities. How is that described on this concept plan? I can't, I can't read the legend.
And I can't read it from this side either. The recreational amenities are typically, if they're not, I can, I can put it into the record. We're talking about sport courts, swimming pools, park facilities, those sorts of things. Ah, here we go. Proposed uses. Accessory community recreation center uses including but not limited to parking, open space, active and passive recreation, including pool, tennis, bocce courts, pickleball.
All right.
But not limited to those things.
I would, I would recommend that this site plan that's being presented would be made as Exhibit E to the ordinance and I'll just, just throw it out now. I would start off that paragraph roman numeral three with the addition of the language, I'll repeat this later, but except as limited by the approved conceptual site plan, those uses development standard, et cetera. I would add that phrase to that first sentence and then I would add the following sentence to the end of that paragraph. The project shall be developed in accordance with the conceptual site plan attached here too and incorporated herein as Exhibit E. That's the one we just talked about. Subject to all applicable development approvals.
We would have no objection to that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I am going to call a five-minute health break for the city council.
I have one quick question.
Yes?
Okay. In our previous discussions in the previous proposal, there were considerably more amenities and there was connection between Rio Villa and Akiasta, et cetera. It's obvious that a number of those amenities have been taken out and there is this beautiful potential expanse of greenlands. Would there be any potential in the future to cooperate with the city into making these lands and amenities developed perhaps in concert to make it public land? Because we're always saying that we're looking for additional park facilities and so forth and this certainly would make a great nature trail and also if we could connect that would be in concert with what we're trying to do to become a bicycle-friendly community.
There would certainly be the ability to have discussions in the future for those kinds of amenities, working a public-private partnership with the city. They are not shown on the concept plan because this is a very different concept from what we had before. We had a project where we were asking the public to come in to an extent. We had commercial facilities. We had a hotel that would have had restaurants and such and we, you know, we were asking. It was that type of a community. It was expected. This is a private residential community and so we did not provide those amenities. And as well, the economics are different in terms of what the project can support and can invest in based on the return. Simply can't do it with a pure multifamily project as you could when you had multifamily and commercial. That having been said, we absolutely would be open to discussions in the future about ways that we could, if the community wanted and the city wanted, utilize that wetland area with boardwalks or a potential connection to Rio Villa for, of a boardwalk or a bicycle path only. I don't think there would be any ability to put a road. That has been asked in the past and I don't think you can put a road through there.
Nathan?
I remember distinctly in our last conversations back in November, that we talked about the parallel dock that was then proposed and that there's really not room for a parallel dock. There would be, it would be, create a navigation hazard, that the waterway would be very narrow and that we felt that that was not a good thing. And so we, we're not in favor of that. And now you've come back with that again. So I haven't heard anyone discuss that, but I remember distinctly that we said that we did not wish to have, create a navigation hazard. So just.
There were concerns expressed about it, but again, those have not been formally designed. You do have standards in your code about the width of canals that need to be maintained and it's our belief that we can maintain those standards with these parallel docks. We also understand that approval of this rezoning doesn't, it approves the use of docks, approves that as a use, but that we would have to establish that we do not provide, that's one of the criteria when you go before the canal advisory board for a special permit. You have to show that there is not a hazard to navigation, not just show that you meet the standards, but that there's not a hazard. So we would have to do that in a separate quasi-judicial hearing. We did not bring our experts to this hearing to discuss that because we're not approving the actual construction of the docks, just parallel docks as a potential use within the facility if we can meet those standards and address those concerns in a separate quasi-judicial hearing.
So the, the concept of a architecturally compatible and attractive dock, dry dock facility was brought up as a possible potential. If that were to incur, would that allow you to then not consider those?
Yeah, so that would provide, that would be in lieu of. It would, that's an either/or. If you are determined that you do not want the parallel docks or even the possibility for parallel docks, we would accept a dry dock facility in the location that I had indicated. That would, the location would be here. It would comply with all codes and we would accept a condition that the, that the walls, the external walls have to be of materials that would make it compatible, recognizing of course, that the front of the dry dock facility is open, where you have the, the boat storage is typically open, but the three other remaining walls would be designed in a way to harmonize with the architecture of the site.
The only concern I have with that is that there are potential impacts associated with that structure that have not been evaluated by staff. You know, to answer your question, as I said at the very beginning and at the very end, they're, they're going to have to get all required governmental approvals, including the city with respect to any docks that they have, so that they're not vested to have those docks. And if it turns out that they can't meet the criteria for the special permit and all that, they're free to seek a, an amendment of, of the site plan to include the upland storage facility and then subject to the review of the city count, of city staff and ultimately the city council, then it could be amended to include that.
And just to clarify, the dry dock facility was not our idea. We have monitored conversations within the community. We know that's something that people wondered, some. There are others who would, you know, some would love it, some would hate it. We recognize that. We were just simply saying that we have heard that chatter in the community and that we would not oppose that instead of the, that that is a decision for council, not for us.
I guess I viewed it as it's really not a negotiable thing. I mean, we could state that, no, no dry dock. I mean, no parallel dock. I mean, it was, that was really the tone of our conversation back in November. And so it wasn't an either/or. It wasn't in negotiation. It was no parallel dock. And so that was, you know, to say, well, but then we get this other facility, which I think would perhaps not be, I see it as being a detraction. So I just, to add a dry, a dry storage facility.
We still need to do our public hearing, so can we take our five minutes now?
Sure.
Before I have to leave? Okay. We're going to call, it's 11:07, so we're going to call to 11:15. Few more than five.
Ordinances require two public readings, but only one public hearing for the city council to consider the testimony and evidence before adopting the ordinance. So this would be the opportunity for the public to have its say regarding the adoption of this ordinance. At the second reading, the, it is an opportunity for the city council individual members to decide after further mental deliberation, personal deliberation, whether or not the action that took at first reading was appropriate, so that they kind of have an opportunity to revisit themselves whether or not to adopt the ordinance at second reading. The public is given an opportunity to attend, the public during the general open for public comment section will have an opportunity to make comments, but there will not be a second public hearing for testimony by the public. So if you have any comments, this would be the time to make them.
Yes. You will be given three minutes. State your name. If you would like to, you could say your address and that you've been sworn. Is there anybody not, that has not been sworn that intends to speak? Two, three. Now would be the time.
Is that everybody?
Everybody?
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings? Thank you. When you come to the podium to speak, please state your name and indicate you've been sworn.
Thank you. So we're going to take public comment over here at this podium. I don't mind you forming a line, just make sure you preserve the access in and out of the doorway. We do have a timer system here. You will see three lights there at the end of the dais, green, yellow, and red. I believe yellow comes on when you have 30 seconds left and when your three minutes is up, the buzzer will sound and your time will be over. And I will start the timer after you state your name, address, and that you've been sworn.
My name is David Flag.
We're going to need you guys to be quiet. Thank you. Go ahead.
I have been sworn in and I'm a resident of Buttonwood Village. I have a statement, I have a letter that has to go to the representative of the, of the project. We have, we are here as homeowners to ask for a contingency. Because of the events of the past week, we would like the time to fully vet the facts to what the developer is planning. The three questions on another letter must be addressed. There must be time, this will be, will take time. We, the homeowners around the property, must be given time to present the facts because, because what you decide is what we will have to live with. One additional question arose in the planning board meeting. The land on the west and north side is presently not owned by the developer and you've had an inordinate amount of time to discuss that. We are asking that we are given that time to rebuff that. She said that they would address it later. Later is when? Are we going to be able to go ahead and have a public hearing on that? I don't think so. Who owns the land? We've already established it and can it be developed? This isn't a development. This is not just an easement. This is, they will have to develop it. This is in the proposal. This is part of what they have. So in my, in my estimation, as the lawyer said last November, they cannot renegotiate this proposal here and now. If they want to change it and alter it, they have to do a new proposal. This was from your city council lawyer last year when she tried to negotiate it. So we're asking that we give the, be given time to analyze the facts and do what we, and be accurate on what we're saying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning. My name is Allison Birch and I'm the president of the Charlotte County Chamber of Commerce and I have been sworn. The Charlotte, the chamber's board of directors has voted to support the Akiasta Drive Ponte Gorda US Anges application for rezoning to Plan Development for the 105 plus or minus acres located on Akiasta Drive. This private condominium community will contain roughly 23 buildings, a clubhouse, a community recreation area, parallel boat slips, and a multi-slip docking facility. We believe the construction of this community will be an economic driver for the city of Ponte Gorda and the entire community. Individuals who live in the condominiums or who will live in the condominiums are potential new business owners and certainly users of local goods and services. So we encourage the city council to support the city planning commission's recommendation to support the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Charlene Duggan. I've been sworn in and I'm a full-time resident of Ponte Gorda for 17 years, a business owner. I believe the Akiasta property should remain zoned, have from the beginning since 2003 when we came up against this. 151 homes on 29 buildable acres is currently zoned. But in this political climate, I will accept 300-plus condo units on 49 acres. Those of us who believe the comprehensive plan of our city fathers and the zoning laws in place were put there for a reason, to create a close-knit hometown community. What many of our city staff and elected leaders have been talked into is an affront to the law-abiding citizens. I lived and operated my marketing business in Philadelphia. I know what urban living is. Even my big-city real estate developer clients did not stoop to this kind of action. Call it what it is, grandiose illusions, runaway egos, greed, whatever the reason, it's a betrayal. I believe what you have been listening to is a paid political announcement. Everything is consistent. It's an excellent example of smoke and mirrors and I'm in the advertising business. I've seen it all. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
I'm Don Kidwell. I've been sworn. I've been a resident of PGI for 20 years now, professional engineer for over 35 years. And I am supporting development of the, the area. But I think we need to be sure that the comprehensive plan is supporting what we want, what the city needs. I'd prefer a single-family, but again, if we get a multifamily with the right conditions and everything on it, we could actually end up with something even better than just single-family. I look at the fact that if we put conditions on it that said, hey, we want to have trails back through the, the development area. We want to have parking so people can go in and use it, use it as a park. Rather than the face docks on the north side, let's make the marina bigger so that we can put the boats out of sight back in there and we wouldn't have any vertical storage. There are a lot of things that we could do, I think, to make this a nicer facility. I know the one building on the end that it's most valuable. Change that to something like townhouses, that one building, because there are people living across there that built their homes there expecting to see single-family. Okay? If we made that one building, the one that they would see, into something more acceptable and left the others as condos, there are just a lot of things that I think need to be considered that we don't have into the conceptual plan and we need it into that conceptual plan before we make any kind of decision on zoning change. My recommendation would be that we, we have a continuance for a few weeks, a month or whatever, until we go through what do we really want in the conceptual plan and get things down. Like, this is all about the developer making money. I was a core, in a core team for Procter &amp; Gamble where we went out and we looked at developing sites, you know, so it's, it's trade-offs. The developer's going to make millions off of this rezoning. I think that we need to look out for our city and make sure that we, the city, and the people that live here get something out of this, not just give it to the developer. So let's go for the things that we really want, let's say as a part of the conditions. We expand the road going out to 41. As we put in bike trails. Let's do things, but we need a little time to look at this package and understand it and be sure that we get something that, that we like and will be beneficial to us. We don't have to do this. We could stay with the same zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Come on up. I thought you guys were well organized over there.
I thought we were too. Good morning. My name is Kim Moss Steller and for the record, I've been sworn.
Yes, pull the mic down so we can.
Okay, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Kim Moss Steller for the record and I have been sworn. We are not against the development of the property. However, we do believe that it should be developed in accordance with the Future Land Use Map, the FLMU, within the comprehensive plan, which would be considered low-density residential for this property. My understanding is, is that the developer holds a permit for general single-family, five units per acre, not 15. By changing the classification to a Plan Development Village, a PDV, you, the city council, have no longer kept within the FLUM that requires low-density residential. The applicant knew he was purchasing attractive land, zoned for low-density, a GS5. So why is he asking for it to be rezoned or why is he asking for a modification for a PDV? I'd like to talk about common sense versus a formula. The applicant and his team shared at the last meeting that plugging in numbers into a formula, there would be less traffic on Akiasta Drive. Common sense tells me, many other people, including at least one city council member, who questioned how these figures arrived at less traffic. If you have 22 condominiums holding 400 and, or 462 units, there will be more than, more traffic than if there were single-family homes. Let's assume that half of the condos will have two vehicles, which, let's be honest, most families do. You will have, you would be looking at 693 plus or minus vehicles trialling on Akiasta Drive. How will that translate to less congestion on an already congested hurricane evacuation route? My obvious, it's obvious that common sense and not plugging numbers into a formula shows us that single-family homes will, will produce much less traffic than the condos. If using the same conclusion as above, half of the number would, and using the, the two vehicles, it would, I use the number of 191 single-family homes, which would be the one per five. It would translate to about 286 plus or minus vehicles and that would be less than half the amount of vehicles on the condos, which would lessen the traffic burden on Akiasta Drive, a major hurricane route. Lastly, I would like to bring to your attention that most people who have chosen to live here because they like the uniqueness and all that Ponte Gorda has to offer. I'm sure that the city council has heard this all before, but I did not choose to move to Naples, Fort Myers, or Sarasota because of all the traffic congestion, the high rises, the crime, and all that comes with this, a large city. I chose to move to Ponte Gorda because of the small-town feel. I chose to move and live in the beautiful, unique city of Ponte Gorda. Please stick to the FM, or the FLUM within a comprehensive plan and deny the request to rezone the classification for low-density residential to a single, to a single, general single-family use, the Plan Development PDV, and thank you for your consideration.
Very good. Thanks.
Way to go.
My name is Kathleen Reed and I have been sworn in. I bought my condo about a year and a half ago with the understanding that the property across the canal was zoned for 191 single-family properties, not 462 condos. The developer knew when he purchased this property what the zoning was. Why is it necessary to change the zoning to condos when we heard at the last hearing with the Planning Committee that there are many, many properties, many that are already zoned for condos in the area that he could use to build condos on? I can't imagine having another 500, 600, 700 cars on Akiasta. I live on Woodthrus. It comes right out onto Akiasta. During the season, I have difficulty getting out there and with this many more cars, it's going to be impossible for me to ride my bike. Not to mention the fact that the council recently approved building a very large assisted living facility on Akiasta, creating more traffic. My dream of living in a quiet, safe community where I can safely ride my bike will come to an end if this council approves this. And I have some other- And I have some other concerns. The fact that the first notice I ever received was when I saw it posted on the property. I live across from this development. Why didn't I get something in the mail? I think that I should have, a little more notice, maybe. And why is this all taking place when the great majority of our neighbors are away for the summer? And why is there not a postponement of these hearings? We just had a hurricane. We just heard all the police and firemen talking about what people have gone through. They're not paying much attention to what's going on in their city right now. They're trying to get their lives back together. These facts make me wonder whether the council has the interest of their constituents at heart or the interest of the developer. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Dennison Reed. I'm a Punta Gorda resident, and I have been sworn in. I'd like to speak to public safety and traffic concerns regarding the new proposal. As property owners, we rely on the city staff, the planning committee, and the city council to identify and address any detrimental impact a proposed development would have on the citizens of Punta Gorda. Certainly, public safety should be a primary concern when evaluating the impact of a proposed development in our community. We're all quite aware from recent history that hurricanes can have a devastating impact on Florida, and large-scale evacuations put a tremendous strain on evacuation routes, which can cause major delays and also put people at risk. Many people are not aware that the hurricane season continues all the way through November thirtieth, well after many of our snowbirds have returned to town. And major hurricanes have been known to hit South Florida in late October, such as Hurricane Wilma. In 2016, when a previous application by the same developer pertaining to the same parcel of property was being considered, public safety concerns received considerable attention by the city. For example, the city staff took notice of the detrimental impact that the proposed development would have on traffic safety, bicycle safety, and traffic congestion on Akiasta Drive. In addition to being a widely-used route for day-to-day transportation, Akiasta also serves as one of only two hurricane evacuation routes in the city, even though it has only one single lane going in each direction. With safety concerns in mind, the city staff indicated that the developer should construct or provide for a turn lane from Akiasta onto US forty-one and a turn lane from Akiasta into the proposed development, and also provide additional bike paths on Akiasta. At the November sixteenth, two thousand sixteen, public hearing, concerns about traffic safety and traffic congestion were reiterated. Nevertheless, the recommended conditions for improving safety and ameliorating traffic congestion were completely rejected by the developer, and the city council appropriately rejected the developer's 2016 proposal. The proposal that's before the city today council, the city council today, includes four hundred and sixty-two condos. This amounts to even more condos than were included in the 2016 proposal, which called for three hundred and eight condos. Furthermore, the current zoning would allow for and was permitted for a total of only one hundred and ninety-one single-family homes. One hundred and ninety-one single-family homes is a huge departure from the four hundred and sixty-two condos that are currently being proposed. It doesn't take a traffic engineer to understand the four hundred and sixty-two.
Thank you.
Can I have?
Go ahead. Go.
Oh, thank you. Four more traffic concerns than a one hundred and ninety-one single-family homes. In addition, the recently-approved assisted living facility on Akiasta will create even greater traffic problems. I am in favor of sensible and appropriate development in our city and on Akiasta, but I strongly oppose a project such as this, which crams inordinate number of condos into a space that was not intended for, and more importantly, creates a very serious risk to public safety in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
May I have the slide, please? Just putting up a comparison slide before I start my presentation, before you start my three minutes, please, just to explain it. Looking at the.
Part of your, part of your three minutes, sorry. Go ahead. State your name that you've been sworn.
Bill Leach has been sworn. All of us in Punta Gorda chose to live here because of the quiet, small-town environment. We do realize that everything has a life cycle, including small towns and cities. Punta Gorda is at least eighty-two percent built out. What remains to be developed in Punta Gorda is like soft clay, and you, council members, are the potters. What you decide will be molded permanently. The concern with this tract of land is overdevelopment. And its location on a narrow canal and critical intersection of other waterways. And I pose a question, will seawalls be required? The fact that, excuse me, the fact is that only about fifty percent of this site is buildable. However, the developer is asking, taking maximum advantage of transfer credits and proposes to build two hundred and sixty-two, four hundred and sixty-two condos on fifty-six acres. Given the subtraction of infrastructure which will be required, that will eliminate sixteen additional acres, leaving forty acres for four hundred and sixty-two condos to occupy. That density equates to eleven units per acre. Comparing that with the existing five units per acre, which is, which is currently zoned. According to the, according to the city of Punta Gorda, there exists two thousand two hundred and eighty-six point four-eight acres of residential land. The tract in question equals one-half of one percent of the total residential land in the city. This may not seem like a large percentage, however, allowing four hundred and sixty-two condos on forty acres represents one-half of one percent of the total population of Punta Gorda, living with egress and regress on one road. Also, if this application moves forward, it will increase the buildable unit multifamily storage from, excuse me, multifamily zone acreage from four hundred and forty-five point nine-nine acres to over five hundred and fifty acres, an increase of twenty-three point five percent. The tract in question equals fourteen percent of the total remaining vacant residential land available in the city. The development of this land is imminent. This is a given and not questioned, not questionable. However, overdevelopment is permanent and detrimental to the health and welfare of this city. Currently, along Akiasta, exist many tracts of land which are available, which include waterfront and dockage, which are zoned multifamily. When this. Why then is this applicant seeking rezoning of excessive development of wetland and sensitive tract of land? Every developer deserves a profit. However, overdevelopment profits only the developer and not the community.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Joe Como, Punta Gorda. And I'll apologize upfront that this seems a little too flippant or sarcastic, but looking at the traffic numbers that were presented, these numbers are essentially the same that have gone back in numerous traffic studies to about the 2003, 2004 timeframe, essentially the same all along. So the question is, was there any real delay on Akiasta in the last several weeks for anybody getting out? For anybody who spent any time on seventy-five in the last couple of weeks, why don't we extrapolate this logic a little bit further and say what we really don't need is any more development in southwest Florida? Because it's plainly clear that seventy-five, even with the left shoulder open for traffic, can't handle the traffic evacuating South Florida. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jane Leach, and I have been sworn in, and I live on Raven Court. I have several concerns regarding this proposal on Akiasta Boulevard I would like to address to the city for consideration. The proposal is craftily introduced once again when over fifty percent of the residents are not present. To compound the issue, Hurricane Irma placed a tremendous burden on the residents when a mandatory evacuation was issued, forcing residents to leave Punta Gorda for their own safety. To date, I believe many still have not returned. So the city, the planning commission, and the city council are faced with deciding once again the development of the largest parcel of land, vacant land in Punta Gorda, when residents are not here to voice their opinions. There seems to be a trend that major developments and changes to our comprehensive plan are proposed during the months when residents are not here. It is evident that this proposal is clearly skirting the comprehensive plan the way it was originally designed, the developer seeking a PDV by eliminating the commercial aspect and therefore increasing the density by not actually changing the comprehensive plan. A PVD provides a variety of housing and business elements where people can live, shop, and recreate without having to drive to other locations. Clearly, the developer is not proposing anything close to this type of property. They have proposed a classic multifamily development that will require residents to travel elsewhere for their daily needs. In November 2016, one of the key components that I thought the council had concerns was the ingress and egress onto Akiasta Boulevard. The developer has not addressed this issue with the proposal. Other unknowns at this point are sidewalk access, bicycle access, lanes, traffic flow, and impact on infrastructure, police, fire, EMTs, and services, considering the addition of four hundred and sixty-two additional condos. There are many unknown and unaddressed issues concerning this proposal that I believe the council has the responsibility to address prior to approval. Once again, this is the largest tract of undeveloped land, home to many animals and birds in the PGI area. I would hope the council would consider all aspects presented here today before arriving at a decision. The residents of Punta Gorda have placed their trust in the city council to represent them in decisions of this nature. Your decision as a council will impact the residents of Punta Gorda for many years to come and long after the developer has left Punta Gorda. Thank you.
Thank you. Line up. Whoever is next. You may form a line if you would like, so you could be ready.
Good morning, council members. My name is Randy Bonk, and I have been sworn. I am troubled by the testimony at the recent planning commission meeting wherein the developer incorrectly stated that they have permitting from SWIFTMUD and the Army Corps of Engineers to develop the proposed PVD. The current approved permits on these properties only apply to a single-family development of one hundred and ninety-one homes. This is the same permit that the developer just three weeks ago applied for an extension without any other changes or modifications. I spoke this week with engineer Steve Lopes in the Sarasota SWIFTMUD office where this permit was issued. Mr. Lopes was on the review committee when the permit was last revised. He advised me in writing that a major modification would be required to change from single-family residential to condominiums. What causes me great apprehension is not so much the developer does not currently possess permitting for multifamily or a PVD, but that they have made misleading statements that they have received permitting. This continues the pattern of misleading the city that has been raised by others. I am very concerned about what other misrepresentations the developer has made to the city and how the developer will act going forward if council approves this request. In addition, when the city reviewed the developer's prior proposal in 2016, there was a condition that the developer prove ownership of a twenty-seven-foot strip of property abutting the canal. I have yet to hear that the developer has done this. To the contrary, the developer took the liberty of submitting a plan that assumes a taking of this property and stated in the planning commission meeting, as well as in the SWIFTMUD permitting process, that this property has been dedicated to the use of the general public forever, which appears as though the developer planned to move forward as though they have every right to use this land as they see fit. In SWIFTMUD's request for clarification dated April fourth of 2012, it stated that per their tax record research, the property is owned by the DNR and the state of Florida. This is something the developer has totally disregarded. While I fully support development of this property as currently zoned, there seems to be too many unanswered questions and disputed information to justify a change in the current zoning. I respectfully request that you deny the rezoning. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Jose Cervantes. I'm a new resident to Punta Gorda. And to echo what others have said, you know, my family and I decided to move here after looking at Port Charlotte and Fort Myers and other areas, really because of the small-town feel. We come from Minneapolis, Minnesota, and so we know what a big town is like, and we really wanted to try a small town. I have a question for the developer, and, you know, I've heard and I commend you on your talk about sustainability and energy conservation, et cetera. I'd like to know if the LEED certification, that is, the Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design, like a platinum certification, is something that you're considering? And, you know, for those not familiar with LEED, a couple of the underpinnings of LEED are that sustainability, LEED buildings save energy, water, resources, they generate less waste, and support human health. The value is that LEED buildings attract tenants, they have cost less to operate, and they boost employee productivity and retention. And so that would be my question to the developer.
Let him finish his three minutes, and then you can address his, yeah, finish your time.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak.
Okay, thank you.
The developer is looking into LEED certification for the buildings. I think that that was probably addressed by Steve Paget. We can't commit to it at this time. We're not far enough along in the design process, having not, wanting to invest the money until we know if we have the ability to move forward with the multifamily buildings. But that is something that they are in fact looking, absolutely looking into.
Thank you. Anybody else? Public hearing. That would be the time. That was the second call. Second call for public hearing. Line up behind the gentleman.
Hello, I'm Tom Hamilton. I have been sworn in. First of all, I do feel that condos are to appropriate use for this piece of property, and I do support the plan from that standpoint. The issue I have is that early in this meeting today, we heard that we had approximately three years of build-out for seawalls. Okay? In other words, it's going to take us three years just to build seawalls to support the eight hundred and ninety-one people who are actually, have broken seawalls at this point in time. Looking at the plan for the property, I have no idea actually how much seawall is involved there. I imagine it's probably another thousand, the two thousand feet of seawall. And I would just hope that in your consideration, that you make sure that this seawall development happens after the eight hundred and ninety-one people get repaired. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Good morning. My name's George Brown. I have been sworn. This new zoning request eliminates the previous commercial aspects but increases the condos by fifty percent, from three hundred and eight to four hundred and sixty-two. This would be on the same footprint where the existing zoning and permits barely accommodate one hundred and ninety-one of the smallest permissible single-family homes. I'm not against developing this property, nor am I against reasonable adjustments in the site's zoning and density, including possibly. the site's zoning and density, including possibly multifamily. I do, however, urge the council to deny this fundamentally flawed request. It responds to one principal objection voiced by many in the community and by the council last November, but ignores the other, the sheer scale of the project. Moreover, the applicant proposes a maneuver that attempts to exploit the land use regulations to affect multifamily zoning without changing the comprehensive plan to conform. Finally, the proposal contains a number of self-serving misrepresentations. I quote, "No increase in density is being requested, and traffic impacts on Akiasta are reduced," end quote. Somehow, 462 residences is not an increase in density or traffic over 191 houses or even 308 condos? Approval of this will exacerbate traffic congestion on Akiasta. Another quote, "The PDV will require the conservation and enhancement of 49 acres of wetlands. No such condition may be placed on the subject property under the existing zoning." In truth, the conservation and enhancement of the wetlands is already preordained by the federal and state governments. A PDV designation can have no effect on this. Rather than apply for multifamily zoning, the developer's asking the council to grant a planned development village designation and waive the requirement for commercial content. That is fundamentally a part of the PDV concept. They are clearly doing this in an attempt to exploit one paragraph of the land use regulations that allows the council to grant a density increase up to an unachievable maximum. I stress the word "allows." The council has full discretion in deciding on what the density of this unit or this project will be, up until that maximum. Furthermore, the land use regulations expressly state that no modification will be granted for the primary purpose of achieving the maximum density on a site. That's a quote. I urge the council to scrutinize the inconsistencies in this request, carefully consider its potential impact on the city's zoning process, and exercise their considerable discretion by rejecting or substantially modifying this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it too late to be sworn?
No.
My name is, my name is Martha Beretta. I'm a full-time resident of Punta Gorda.
Let her swear. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I, my comments will not be concerned about traffic or density or any of that. I grew up here. My family's been here since 1885, and I hear a lot of you talk about the small-town environment that you came for. When I grew up here, we were family-oriented, and we were a community that was united. I moved back here in 2001, and I have to say, I'm saddened by what I see now, that we're segmented. We're not the Punta Gorda, the small-town, the family, the united community that we are, that we were. We're segmented, different groups, not just Punta Gorda. What's happened, the, I guess, the previous city councils, I won't blame you all, is that you've managed to make this, I get the.